Okay, this is the City of Planning Commission's special meeting for Wednesday, November 1st, 2023, City Hall Council Chamber, 209 East Kern Street, Taff, California. The City of Planning Commission meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are livestreamed at https://www.youtube.com forward slash user forward slash City of Taft. Public comment can be made in person and can also be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the city clerk@cityclerk@cityoftaft.org, made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments not made in person will be accepted up until one hour before the meeting, and any comments received will be read into the record. Okay, so, beginning with the Pledge of Allegiance, anybody here volunteer to do? Okay, John?
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy doing the invitation.
Father, thank you for this city, and thank you, Father, for the leadership of it. I thank you for your blessing and your guidance over this meeting tonight and over this city, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Okay, we're going to be installing one of our commissioners today, so Ron, if you could step down to the podium?
We'll do roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call? Do we do it before he's seated?
Roll call standing.
Okay, we'll do roll call then.
Chairman Livingston.
Here.
Vice Chair Schertz is absent. Commissioner Dowden.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Orin.
Here.
I would have thought you swore in before.
No. You want to raise your right hand or?
That hurts, go ahead.
I state your name.
I, Ron Orin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. Good grief. Thought I had better stick them. Watch your head.
Welcome back to the dais, Ron. We missed you.
Well, thank you. It's good to be back. Spent a little while.
Okay, so, we will go to item number one, and we do have a citizen requesting to speak, Kathy Orin from the Chamber of Commerce.
I appreciate this chance to say thank you to the city for their support of our first annual, I say first annual because it was so successful, I'm sure there is going to be one every year, Love Your Pet Day that was on Center Street last Saturday. And I have to tell you, when the Downtown Business Committee of the Chamber came to us with this idea, I was not sure, but they were so sure that this would be successful, and they planned so many parts to this, that I, there was no way I could say no. I mean, not that they would have listened had I said no, but I want to especially thank John Atherton from Westside Furniture, who worked on this for many months, Julie Franks from State Farm, Renee Adamo, who represents the rec and is hanging out at the Fox Theater these days, Kristy Durkin from Bangs and Tangles, and Amy Steele from Fertile Earth. These guys really worked detailed ideas into action, and they did very, very well. We started with the high school art teacher, Mrs. Davis, Matt Davis's wife Sophie, and she had seven students who were willing to paint store windows on Center Street. Now, if you're old like I am, you will remember back in the day where Halloween, every store window was painted in some kind of Halloween picture, and we're kind of hoping that that catches on. These kids did a great job, and the people that were on Center Street got the opportunity to vote on their favorite. I am going to ruin this young lady's name, but the winner of the $50 gift certificate for the most outstanding typical Halloween art on the window was actually on the window of the Fox Theater. Her name is Adeline Eckertslie. I'm sorry, I'm sure that it's said much more eloquently by a person in her family, but we really appreciated being able to work with the high school, and hopefully we'll bring back that tradition to Taft. We probably had between 250 and 300 people. Every animal was on a leash. Most of the animals, and most of them were dogs, were in costume. We had a costume contest, and Wendy Berry's Black Lab Echo won. He was dressed as an 80s disco person, which is really something to pull off if you're a Black Lab. We had Kern County Animal Control here with eight adoptable pets. They were all dogs. They were all either spayed or neutered. They had their shots, and they had one more thing. They were chipped, and four of those eight were adopted. So, that was great. Mallory Lumsden was here with her music and with an opportunity for people to be, to have their pictures taken with their pets, which was fun. And we had a lot of vendors that showed up, and I would say a good time was had by all. Of course, the Lions Club came with their tri-tip sandwiches, and that was just awesome. So, people who have businesses on Center Street and were willing to noticed that they would do trick-or-treating of pets. So you could take your pet trick-or-treating up and down, and you knew exactly which businesses would not be offended if you walked in with your pet and said trick-or-treat. And those people that participated in that were a part of a drawing, and that worked out very well. We had 23 businesses that welcomed pets on Saturday. So, it was, it was really fun. We appreciate very much. Now, I want to bring to the attention of you, and maybe Mark, and particularly, I'm sure that Mark knows this, but we are always helped by Public Works. Whenever the Chamber does anything, Public Works is awesome. And Chris Creche had met with us the day before to make sure that everything was lined out, and that was wonderful. We had a person on call who called us and said, "Actually, I'm not on call. Brett is on call." And so, when we did have an issue and called Brett, he said, "I don't know the answer to that question. I'm a street sweeper." So, and he stopped what he was doing and came down, and he figured it out. And we always get wonderful service from Public Works, and we really appreciate that. I do want to suggest that in the paperwork, that we make sure people know that the restrooms at the Fifth Street Plaza, and also the ones that used to be called the Sir Optimus Park Restrooms, are no longer available. Most people probably know that. We did not. They are not available. Understandably not available. We understand completely. And also, electricity is a kind of a iffy little thing, and that I just want to make sure that in the future, people going through the paperwork to use Fifth Street Plaza and doing all the things properly to use Fifth Street Plaza, that that's noted to them, so that they know, if you want electricity, you need to make sure that we know you need electricity, so we can arrange for electricity to be turned on. All that was taken care of for us. We had just a few moments of, I wonder what we do now, but again, we, Public Works was there and took care of us. The restroom thing, interestingly enough, that was not an issue. I was catatonic, thinking, oh my gosh, I should have ordered restrooms. It was fine, so we were, we were fine, but just those kind of notes might be helpful. I live here, and I didn't know that, so, just for, for future. And I think that's it. Thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yes, you. We appreciate yours.
Okay, next up is the minutes. A roll call vote for that. We'll need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion that the minutes be approved.
I'll say it. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Orin.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Dowden.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
And Chairman Livingston.
Yes. Okay, we are now moving on to item three, Study Sessions, City of Taft Housing Element Update for 2023-2031, and I see our eager planning director getting ready to give us a tour of the whole thing, it looks like.
Thank you, Chairman Livingston. I'm going to keep it in similar format as last time, even though you do have before you as complete and edited document as far as I can go at this time, and I'll explain a little bit more on what's left and how we're going to get there. And with Commissioner Orin back on the team here, I'll still go through some of what we've done in the past couple of meetings and updates since the last time you were here with us. So, let's go to begin. So, on the revisions that we've done, we've gone through the whole document. This is just highlighting the sections 1, 6.1 through 6.9. The one section, and I'll probably be repeating this at the end, that we didn't update, which is Section 6.4, which summarizes all of our workshops and public outreach efforts, and that's going to come from a consultant helping me out to finish this up. So, to quickly go through this, Section 6.1 is just the introduction section, and it mainly involved, and actually, the entire document is updating from the prior eight-year review period of 2015 to 2023, to the new eight-year period of 2023 to 2031. And then, it, as with any introduction, it kind of sets the framework for the whole document, where there was some amendments to the reference to the government code, state policies, where there's some new goals and policies handed down by the state, and mostly has to deal with the fair housing that we've discussed in the prior. We have a friendly little fly today. This is going to be fun. All right, on to Section 6.2, the Regional Housing Need Allocation Plan. Commissioner Orin, you were part of this when we got the numbers from Kern Cog, where we have to update all our references to the, from the prior element to the current one, but it includes all the Regional Housing Need Allocation Plan, which is the 504 units we need over the eight-year period, which is handed down from the state to Kern Cog and then on to us. So, we updated the quantitative needs, the current needs, which would include missing middle housing and ADUs, which fit nicely into the center part of the city, the more dense part of the city, including our downtown, and covering future needs. Section 6.2.2, I updated the median income for Kern County, which is up to 54,000, almost 55,000, but unfortunately for Taft, we're kind of static in the mid 40,000s. And then, updated the census data on extremely low-income households, which did increase from the 2010 to 2020 census data from 300 households to 365. And then, as I mentioned, we updated the project, projected needs to include all low-income housing needs. On to Section 6.3, which is a review and revision of the previous element. We went over all the programs. Recall, the annual progress reports that we sent to the state, just went over the programs that were set for that prior element, and all the accomplishments or things we completed with that, and part of that was our demolition effort over the prior eight years, where we demolished 19 different residential units, and that varied from dilapidation to fire structures. And then, we also, with Program 12, we amended the zoning code to include the emergency shelters with the other transitional and supportive housing required by state law. We skipped 6.4 to Section 6.5 for the housing needs assessment, and this includes the whole analysis and data that's provided through the census, and thankfully, the cog, along with the entire eight cogs in the valley, there was a joint effort to kind of disseminate all the census data for each city and county to use to address this chapter, however it looks in each housing element, covering regional housing, housing conditions, growth trends, all things demographics, where we are with overpaying for housing, utility and other housing costs, senior households, disabled persons, developmentally disabled, female-headed households, overcrowding, large families, emergency shelters, farm workers, assisted housing, and then, the newest one out of them all is actually the last one on this list, which is the Project Room Key and Home Key, which is the short-term solution during COVID, where hotels were used up for housing purposes, and I believe Home Key is the long-term plan of how transitions like that can happen. Section 6.6 is the future housing needs. So, we're addressing the growth trends in Kern County and Taft with the forecasts in demographics and population going out to 2035 and 46. This is the same, these same projections are every city and county up and down the valley, covering population, group quarters, projected household needs, and employment in our areas. Then the big one, which is determining whether or not your jurisdiction has sufficient land inventory to accommodate the arena number of 504 units. So, I think actually this, the page references, the first bullet there is probably off after so many edits, and then also, you have the clean version. If you had a chance to read through that one, if you pervert that over the strike through an underlined version of the edited document, and also referencing table number 23, we'll have to renumber the entire thing, because some tables have been deleted, some have been added, but I've broken it up into three different groups now, instead of one running list of properties. The first one is the infill lots, or the acronym of IFL. That's primarily in the central part of the city, where there are small lots that I think don't produce more than one to, I think, up to about 20 units on the largest property. It's about a half acre, probably in the R3 zone or mixed-use zone. Then the second one is the large lot properties with the acronym of LLP. This involves the Sandy Creek Estates project, which is listed as properties one and two, and other large properties that either have been on the list before, had a prior approved tract and probably expired, and then it also includes a number of properties on the other east side of 119, and that's the largest one. If you see on the left there, under the title, the LLP section has the potential of producing almost 5,700 units, and that's a mix between single-family and multifamily, so there's both room for, you know, your everyday single-family home, both market rate and higher, and also multifamily, that could be rental housing that we do need here. The third table is focused on the properties within the downtown specific plan project area, and as you can see on the list on the left, among all the vacant lots, because I believe the plan mentioned, it could, the max production is somewhere around 3,000 units or something like that, and I believe that's just more, again, what we mentioned then, it was needed to do the SECLA analysis, and that was more of an assumption, even though it doesn't state it explicitly, of if every lot was empty and every lot produced at its max, you would get 3,000 units. With this, I don't recall the total acreage of it, but the downtown area can produce almost 1,000 units as well. It's all multifamily-type zoning, so it's prepared, or it's set up for apartments. We'll see if condos are an option that come into here. It's not too popular of a housing option in the valley, but between all three of these groups that I've separated into three, but the total output of potential units is almost 7,000 at 6796 total units, and the three tables are complete and inserted into Section 6.7, along with a brief narrative below, where I don't believe any one property is more unique over the others, so there wasn't a property-by-property analysis, but the tables do include, more on the right two columns, certain unique traits of the property, whether it was a significantly undersized lot, which is frequent in the infill lot area, or some of the properties we did include that are still owned by the Bureau of Land Management, which is the next properties adjacent to the airport addition neighborhood here, or other little notes that should let someone know that this is an existing condition with it. The one good thing is none of the buildable areas are in flood zone areas, so that wasn't a note needed on many of the properties. Granted, Sandy Creek Estates does have flood zone on their area, but they're setting aside that land as part of their environmental mitigation, so they're set out there. So, the last bullet here, there's the easier-to-read table of land inventory within the housing element. What you don't have with this staff report is this separate HCD-formatted land inventory, and it's similar to the, if you recall, the annual housing report I have to provide each year, the table that lists all the permits we've issued, and all that is actually a rather large table, and probably would need like a 24 by 36 sheet of paper just to have it at 12-point font. Again, they have another table here where it'll probably be inserted, attached as like an appendix, where it's their official list, and I believe what they do, it's probably formatted for their electronic system, because they do have mapping systems that track every jurisdiction's housing progress, and in this case, it'll be the available lots list that they'll be tracking as we develop in town, and all 400 other cities and 50-plus counties that submit as well. So, they're improving their databases, if you will. So, that will be provided in future agendas and at the final draft that we bring before you. So, on to 6.8, the analysis of potential constraints. This gets into more localized issues with each city. It begins with generalized stuff with land use and zoning ordinance limitations, you know, whether it's lot sizes or densities or other issues there, the allowance of manufactured housing and accessory dwelling units, any kind of limitations that come out of the building code, or how we process our permits, and then, we updated our fees, since we just did a major fee update back in March, we got all that updated in the document, a discussion on the oil company-owned properties, or substandard lots, substandard housing, any issue with infrastructure with water and wastewater, non-governmental constraints, the availability of land, is there land contamination, getting into market constraints, cost of construction, financing, talk very general, because it's not so much our place to really get into the expertise of that, but that is an issue with housing. Then there's whether financing is available, or if the local income levels are sufficient to purchase housing, energy costs, and then environmental constraints. So, that covers all of Section 6.8. Into 6.9, this is titled as the 2023-2031 Housing Plan. Last time we were here, I went over the previous four goals that were already listed, and when I really did a deeper dive into it, they're a good general set of four goals that didn't need as much editing as I thought they would when we were talking last. So, I provide a little bit of a strike through the, an underlined version here, where the only thing we really struck through was kind of the very subjective term of decent on goal number two there, where conserve and maintain sound, viable neighborhoods that are decent, safe and sanitary. It's, what's your definition of decent, and what's mine? So, I think it is generally meaning a well-built and well-maintained, safe and sanitary neighborhood, so. Plus, goals are more of the general ones. You set your, you know, policies and actions after that, so. And then on to goal three, this may, I think I mentioned last time, this may be edited further, but I added "and fair" opportunity of housing because of the state's requirement of analyzing what they have seen as an issue with affirmatively furthering fair housing across the state, so ensuring that the housing choice is there for all peoples in the state. So, right now, we're starting with "and fair" to add to that one, and when we get the consultant on board, that hopefully has gone through a couple of cycles of going through the fair housing analysis with the state, we'll be able to see how it fits for Taft after looking at our 19, 20 different analysis categories that there is for that, and we'll probably have, it'll be presented at a public meeting and workshop, and see if there's a need to amend the goal further. And then, goal four is more of dealing with energy conservation, all things efficiency with our housing in the city. On to 6.9, the housing plan, it begins briefly with housing programs, financial resources, discusses a little bit of CDVG funds and home funds. The home funds were primarily utilized for the first-time homebuyer program, and I think CDVG or some form of that was the rehabilitation grants in the past. We're going to have to revisit that and see what's out there available now, but those programs are still on the housing plan list. Further into Section 6.9, I mentioned that there may be quite a few Further into section six point nine, I mentioned that there may be a, quite a few deletions and edits on this, again, going through it. Both with the hat of what's needed here and what's the expectation of the state. Still maintaining a re, housing rehabilitation program. Whether or not we really have the funding in place or not, should be a continued plan. It's only in red because that's when it's up in the air. We, we're not sure what the funding source is going to be for any kind of housing rehabilitation program. The first-time homebuyer as well, it was fairly successful program, but we do need to revisit that. The three I thought would be easy to remove are in this orange color, the zoning ordinance review, land use element review, and ADA compliance, because on the last element, we actually had very specific goals to achieve where there was a ordinance change, an element change. And then there was further ADA updates in the law regarding a public accommodation. So if there's a housing situation, someone has some level of disability, there's something in the law where they need to be accommodated for and provided a ramp or modifications of the home type of thing. So we added the, those, or we amended the code to match the state law. So now those are kept there just as general programs where should state law change or other situations occur where there's a need to amend the zoning ordinance, the land use element, which is the general plan for all things development in the city. And the same for ADA compliance, whether on the planning side or it actually is affected more on the building code side where you have the detail outline of what's compliant with ADA. And then the other two red items I have there are the fair housing support and information dissemination. Again, the whole analysis of furthering fair housing in the city of Taft and statewide, I think will affect how those two programs will be written. So there's a slot there for whatever we end up with when we go through that analysis. And all the other not bolded white letterings there are carryovers from prior, the prior element as there's still something that should be done and continued in the city. From infill housing to self-help housing, your, your Habitat for Humanity type projects. And still having a program that promotes market rate housing as well. It's not just about the affordable, it's the full range of income levels. The last two on the right column that are bolded are the two I mentioned about accessory dwelling units. And the programs are listed in your staff reports where sometime in twenty twenty-four, when we're done with the element, we'll move into working on getting pre-approved ADU plans. There's a number of cities statewide that have done this kind of program where they put out an RFP for architects or engineers to have some template ADUs that will fit and work on the lots that they have in their cities. So I think we discussed the last time as well where we all know there's a good amount of areas in Taft that have alley access. So is there a way to put it in the rear yard and give them their own little parking pad on the side, even though parking's not required for the unit? Or other unique things where there are additions to the home? Second stories above garages, or you build a new garage with the second story unit, there, there's every combo out there. And I think we'll want to push for whatever's unique for Taft and to provide enough options where there's enough things where a person can just pay a fee that covers a production of the plans and they could pay for their permit right then and there, where all they have to worry about is hiring the contractor to build it. So that's how it's worked in other jurisdictions that have processed it. And I'll probably piggyback back of however they successfully went through that. And then the second one there is the actual goal of hoping to get at least with the help of the pre-approved plans that maybe five or so permits are issued a year for ADUs. Because we've barely been averaging about one over the last eight. I think it's a little less than one. But it's picked up a little bit more recently for new home development with a pre-planned ADU in the back. We've had a standalone ADU permit come in recently, so it's starting to pick up. But it's slow going still, and it's actually slow going statewide. The, I think I sat in on something where Bakersfield's busiest year was like nineteen permits for ADUs with nearly half a million people there. They only get that much, so it's, because it's still costly, it's still construction. You know, so getting the financing on that backend is still going to be the hurdle for everybody. But we're going to hopefully help the front end with some of these pre-approved plans from there. So that's the list of programs we have now. We'll see if anything comes from the assistance from the consultant and a state review of our programs. And then the last bits aren't too much here, quantified objectives. There's just a table where they ask for a quantitative objective, how many units do you anticipate to build? We stayed optimistic. The numbers you see particularly in the left column, which include the new construction units that we, our assumptions of our new projects that would outright meet the RENA number. So from the low-income housing is probably going to be a one or one full project and that is affordable housing, rental units. Hopefully in the downtown area near the transit center, that's the hope and the plan. And then a market rate one that has a grouping of inclusionary units to balance out the income levels on that one. Or two standalone projects should be able to meet that quantitative objective we have there. And then the build-out of Sandy Creek, it could happen in eight years, but that's not been the pattern for us. But that's the objective set in that table, to set a goal. And then there's also rehab units and conservation of units as well. Those are pretty low as the history even with our first-time home, well, our rehab unit program in the past. I think that didn't have much more than two in a given year or so. It's kind of tough to solicit, get people to apply and get them to qualify and all that, so. But we'll still pursue or try to achieve those numbers. And then the last two sections of six point eleven and six point twelve are just the final general requirement section and conclusion. The general requirements is just basically a statement of consistency that the housing element will be consistent with the general plan as a whole, which is a longstanding state law, state law item where whenever you're working on, these aren't standalone elements. They, well, they stand alone, but also, but also are consistent with one another. And then the conclusion or, but also consistent with the zoning ordinance where you don't have density inconsistencies or other goal and plan objectives that clash with one another. Then on the conclusion section, it outlines where the city has been with housing production and where it's going. You'll see a table there that lists the RENA numbers from the two thousand two to seven to the current housing element. And it also shows what they accomplished in those three prior housing elements for home building. I think I mentioned last time where I think some of our increased RENA requirements may be because two thousand two to seven actually did pretty well coming out of the nineties, I guess, with some building. We actually were almost right at a hundred percent. I think we were like ninety-four percent of our RENA. Which is good, but I guess we hit a little lull coming in to the recession. But then Sandy Creek Estates and some of the other housing projects that finished up, we've had a little bit of a rebound. But the state, I guess, thought more of us in building a little bit faster and growing a little bit more. We haven't quite seen it, but that table there shows it. And then after that, there's a bit of a narrative that's kind of carried over from prior elements of projects that started a number of years ago and have proceeded and some that have unfortunately stalled and expired and all that. And just kind of a general summary to conclude the housing element there in six point twelve, the conclusion. So that concludes my presentation on this. The document is done. Well, it's not done in the sense that we're, we're done. So any review comments you may have today or even in the coming weeks as I start working to, that's what I forgot, the next steps, I apologize. As I mentioned, there is funding through Kern Cog, it's about seventy-three thousand dollars. I'm hoping that should cover just what's needed to finish the document, do that analysis on fair housing and complete the SECA process, which should be pretty simple. It's not a complicated thing that really gets scrutinized through the state agencies. It's more producing it. Going through the amount of public review day processing and all that. And then we do need to do our outreach to the rest of the city. The five of you have seen this document a number of times this year. And we do need the public's input to round it out and then bring it back to you for approval and the city council for approval. So I'm going to be putting out a RFP in the coming month or so to round out this year. And hopefully we hit the ground running with a consultant in January.
I have a question about the seventy-three thousand. That's money from Kern Cog to the city to offset our expenses in the compliance process and creating this.
No, if you recall, the monies that we received for, that we used towards the downtown specific plan. It's more money from that same pot that came from there. And it's more, it has to be housing-based, so another city could be using seventy-three thousand to pay for a similar pre-approved ADU plan. Or to be supplemental money if they're in the middle of a housing project or something like that. But most of us are still in the middle of our housing element, so I think most will be using it there.
It's a total of seventy-three thousand or is it seventy-two thousand per community?
It is actually per community. There was a meeting at Kern Cog a month or so ago. And we did discuss it. We looked at the pro rata or per capita type share. We would have received less than ten thousand that way. So to help boost up every city who's probably mid-element, which we are, the cities that were there and attended agreed that the even split because that seventy-three thousand is pretty much the same per community. Granted, it probably costs a little bit more to get a Bakersfield or Kern County element or other project completed. But at that rate, it's not intended to really complete an entire document. It's going to be a supplement to every jurisdiction.
Small communities can't get started sometimes.
Yeah, the nine or ten of us that are smaller than Bakersfield, Delano and so forth. It's gonna help us for sure and it certainly will help the other cities as well. And didn't seem like we had any objections for doing the even, even split amongst the jurisdictions. We're still anticipating there's more to come. I don't know there's budget items, but we'll, we'll cross that bridge of if anything gets cut later. But right now that funding's available and I just need to reach out to them for that and then produce the RFP documents to start soliciting consultants that could help us out with this housing element. I have a pretty good list of folks that will be in addition to who we went out to for the specific plan, because it'll be similar firms or individuals, so hopefully it won't be too difficult. But again, the entire Central Valley is mid-process right now and hopefully there's consultants that have the time to help out.
Yeah, that's, that's a big chunk of people.
That is.
And you have a finite group from which you're drawing, so.
You were talking about maybe trying to get a pre-approved set of plans for ADUs. We're, we're still probably a couple of years out on that easy, right?
Well, the way I'm planning for it is that we'll complete this housing element process sometime in late spring next year. And then jump right into working on the pre-approved plans. I set a general goal timeline for December of twenty-four to have that done. Because it should be pretty straightforward because the, the plans are fairly simplified. I've seen a couple of the other cities that have gone through this process. I do want to push, I want to keep them affordable, but also, you know, decent-looking for folks.
Yeah, the comments are about decent, well-built, et cetera, et cetera. They want to hold that standard.
Yeah, and, but also where it could be placed on almost any lot in the city. Because there, there's certainly some restrictions here and there, but, but it will definitely be the very first project we work on after the housing element. And it'll definitely come before the five of you and the city council. City council's the funding side and I'm not sure how the other jurisdictions did the whole approval process. If it goes before both and all that, but I'll, I'll wrap my head around the details of that next spring.
One of the only problems I see on that is, you know, it, it might be good for like a year, but it seems like every year the calculations change a little more, the efficiency. I'm hearing, you know, we're gonna have to start doing maybe two or three years down the road possible for disabled, wider doorways, wider hallways, walk-in showers. So there's constantly change and Ron knows it's. So you might be able to get like a general layout and design, but then every year have to update.
So it's a perfect comment because that would be a good detail bullet item where to encourage either the plan shows a detail where a standard two-foot-six door is there, but there's room to put a three-foot accessible. Maybe the plans could just have, you have your basic plan and it can have those options of a accessible restroom, more accessible kitchen areas where there's less bottom cabinets. It's a good idea to have where, because some people may be building it for less mobile people, whether they're young or older. The whole range of folks that, you know, may need to be in a wheelchair or whatever their means.
It would just, it would be a changing document as every year it changes.
Maybe that's something we could put as, you know, extra points, go to a submitter that is going to provide, you know, plans within the budget that provide those options to help guide the homeowner when they, so they don't have something that's generic, but then they can't get someone a TIL student, an ARC, someone who would be getting assistance through the ARC or anything like that, or their own family member that has that need. And they don't know how to modify the plans that way. So that'll, that'll be a good point to put into the eventual RFP that the architect or engineer needs to add that as a option element or at least just on the plan, so it helps guide them to build.
When you say that you have seen some of these plans from other communities, what are you seeing? Are you seeing efficiency units that are actually no bedroom or one bedrooms? Are you seeing any two bedrooms?
Yeah, they, mostly they're larger. I, I, I don't think I've seen too many that would be considered more studio size, you know, sub-five-hundred square foot. It's definitely more of a, typically it's been three. And I think they've done square footages far enough apart where like six hundred, nine hundred, because ADUs can be as big as twelve hundred square feet. You know, very small, three-bedroom home.
As small as seventy?
Technically seventy, but you try to gear that more towards what's called the junior ADU. Where you actually modify a portion of the existing home to be, have like an exterior door. Have a rental that way, shared bathrooms, stuff like that. Gets you to that seventy square feet. But I always encourage folks, I think the smallest efficiency type thing is in the two hundreds. But I think, I would think most folks to have the flexibility for using it personally. You know, an aging teenager that's still at home, family member that needs a rental spot or you want to be an Airbnb person would want something that's in that six hundred to thousand square foot range, a distinct, single-bedroom type of thing. But, you know, there's a number of variations of properties here, the small lot folks that need to figure out a five hundred square foot option. So that, that's what I would be asking for is at least three options that have the square footage range that people would look for, bedroom ranges. And then those that are alley-loaded, those that are on properties where they just have the driveway from the front. You know, things like that where they can do enough template units that can fit ninety percent of the lots here.
You can't do all the work for the individual, but you can have some good guidelines. And maybe, what I have written down earlier was to question you about like we're talking a standard plan. It's a plan that's already pre-approved. One of us could walk in and buy it.
And it's all current code compliant.
Put it on our lot and we check setbacks and there we go.
Yes.
And the other question I had was in six, seven, do we have a list of properties and do we correlate that to the owner of that property? So an interested party could come into city hall and inquire and get the information. Rather than all that circuit, this way you go about it normally with title companies and profiles and land searches, et cetera.
Unfortunately, we don't have as detailed of information as those land companies. But these are all vacant lots. They're, for the most part, they're all vacant. I think there's maybe a dozen or so that have a unit on it where either they're in a zone where a duplex can be there and there's one unit that's there. There's a couple lots I recall where there is a unit, but it looks more like a second unit that survived, but the front unit probably got demolished for some reason. Or some that look like maybe they were a garage conversion in the back way back when. And the front unit's gone, so a lot of the half addresses, if you will. So we just listed every single vacant property because we're not in the position where we need to start looking at developed properties that need to redevelop and add units. You know, built-out cities in LA County, Orange County, Bay Area where they got. where they got even larger RENA numbers and very few empty lots that can build new and meet those numbers. Have to get creative with that. But the list is purely APN-based. Um, and I always work with, uh, folks that are trying to get information on the property, but most times they have contact info, but they're contacting me zoning, permit processes, fees and things like that.
Right.
There, there aren't too many that are, um, needing help with the, um, uh, property owner info. Uh, but we try to direct them towards the assessor and title companies.
Okay, we, we may, um, the state of California may wind up having people interested in that. But the problem that I see is that it's just as expensive or more expensive to build these small ones. So if we were incentivized by the state of California, states would maybe tax credit for a portion of what we're doing. So then that would give, uh, a lot of people the incentive. But, you know, you don't want, um, the big builders, D.R. Horton, to come in and do tax incentives.
Right.
That isn't fair but level or a playing field so that maybe those of us that make two hundred fifty thousand and less are qualified to get a portion of our expense of construction and the cost of building as a, um, a tax, uh, credit so that then we can get this development off the ground.
Right. So one thing, we'll go over this before we put the, um, RFP out 'cause I want all five of you comfortable. We may even go to an economic development committee meeting to get a couple of council members involved. And we'll go through all the options or enough options that we can think of where it keeps those costs low upfront. Some things I'm hearing are, I don't think we would be one that would absolutely require a separate meter for that other unit, 'cause PG&E has their costs. You know, you can tether to the main panel and figure out electric bills between you and your renter. You know, that, that's something you could figure out. Some areas are requiring meters, are requiring this, requiring that. Um, brand-new, uh, water connections that now bring in a water district fees. So we'll, we'll, we'll discuss all that when we get into the program. Um, but there's ways to, um, uh, make the options broader and hopefully keep the cost down for the eventual builder for it. And the main thing is if we, these plans work as a good template for folks to work with or they build straight off it, that's, that's what we'll do.
Do you know of any, uh, grants?
Well, the one thing is we are technically funded for this. The, what I did budget-wise is that the city council in the last budget year gave us, uh, the planning department extra fifty thousand as a combo of having this proj- project go forward and, um, as a backup for any cost overruns on the consultant with the housing element. They're tethered together basically. So we do have funding to do all this, but grant-wise for helping the individual build, I'm not aware of any on that end. But on the city's cost then to get this done and get some plans out there, um, we're not needing to go beyond the seventy-three thousand we're getting from Kern Cog.
My, my last question, uh, is in section six-nine and, uh, CB, uh, CDBG funds. Is there anything that takes us back to the older style community block rat that we, we used to get?
They just reissued and we're not as familiar with the current, um, available funding programs.
But there will be something, you're gonna try to bring that back in some shape or form.
Not sure.
I hope so.
There, there's always, um, the generic groups of housing, economic development, commercial, if you wanna call it that, infrastructure and so on. Um, apparently, uh, probably with all the, um, stuff that came out of the past couple of years coming out of the pandemic to generate, you know, community improvement through, uh, uh, I forget the acronyms of, uh, CARES and, um, the different, uh, infrastructure bills that came out of the federal government. The funding's gonna start rolling out, um, these years. And I think the latest CDBG is probably the first round of that.
Good, I think that will be generally opposed to that kind of stuff, but, um, it's a way to get us off of, um, ground zero.
Right.
Dead, not moving.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Nope. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to number four, the planning director report.
Um, what else? Oh, uh, I'll just mention that I am out of the office from November sixth to November fifteenth. That's part of the reason why we're having our meeting today instead of next week. Um, so if there's any questions while I'm gone, please work through Nadine Story or Permit Tech and she will, um, get you situated and she'll reach out to me if I'm available to, um, handle anything there, but she's very capable, so, uh, please work with her if you're working on any permits and all that. But I'm here through Friday, but then I'm out for a week and a half. That is all.
So we have no city attorney today.
We can speak for him.
He did not provide a, he did not provide a statement.
Yeah. Uh, any commissioner comments?
It's just good to have her on back.
Yes.
Yeah, um, I, I have a comment. I wanna thank, uh, you folks, uh, the community at large for the prayers and the blessings you've been to me. It was, um, uh, very surprising turn circumstances and, uh, compounded by, uh, all that time in the hospital. And, uh, I am grateful and a walking testimony to prayer working because I am able to walk and speak, which I was not able to do three months ago. So I'm real pleased. Just thank you for your thoughts, this board and the community.
Then we will move on.
I do have, yeah, I do have something. I spoke with, uh, the director of Habitat for Humanity, Golden Empire today, excuse me, and they did select a family. I don't know who it is, but they will be announcing it next week for the house on Calvin and Third. And so that's very exciting. Um, they're very happy to be back in Taft again and they do have plans for, uh, for their partnerships with the city of Taft, um, for the families. So that should be starting. We're, we just are going to need to support it as a community and volunteer, whatever it is that you can do, whether it's, uh, some trained, um, skill, certified skill or just that you're out there helping with lunch or whatever, getting volunteers. And I think a lot of what Habitat will look at as far as moving forward is what kind of support they can get from the community. And so I'm excited about it. I'm looking forward to it and I'm just glad that they've, uh, they're there, they're here. So we'll be, we'll be seeing that all come together pretty soon.
That's great.
But I'll, I'll piggyback on that. One of the most important things that unskilled people that just have a good heart can do for them is at the end of the day, show up for an hour and clean up the debris and get it so the place looks nice and it's safe for the workers to be on. 'Cause you don't want people getting injured as they're trying to help us improve our community. So just, uh, a little cleanup would be greatly appreciated by them.
When they were building my house, I was not one that, that could get up on the roof or do a lot of the heavy labor. And many other times I would go into their, um, to their tool shed and just organize it. And that was really helpful, clean it and organize it. So, uh, we just all can do what we can do and it's a wonderful time. And I can promise that you will enjoy your contribution.
Thank you. Um, well, we'll now move on to item number seven, the identification of a representative in the city council. I'm assuming that the representative will still go to the second city council meeting to do the presentation.
I think our clerk might be able to get it on this next one for Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay, we just wanna make sure.
November seventh.
Now, unless, again, I always offer the opportunity for somebody else to do this, but if not.
More than willing to allow you that privilege.
Then, um, I will be happy to go ahead and perform that function. Um, in that case, we just need a motion to adjourn.
All motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So adjourned.